What is currently a French position to post that instead as a foreign language position. We did a lot of work, I don't know how many years ago, maybe eight or so years ago, on the foreign language program. And what it talked about was the importance of the quality of the program and in particular, the quality of the instructor. And it was very explicitly said, it doesn't matter what the language is. And that's part of why it just made feel comfortable going Spanish in Hanover and French here is the language doesn't matter. They actually even proposed some ideas like you do French one year and Spanish the next, you can do half a year of one. The idea is getting the kids learning a language. And I think nothing against French, it could be any language. We just want to cast the biggest net we can to get the absolute best teacher that we can. And my sense is there are more Spanish teachers around than there are French. And so I just, for the sake of the program where quality of instruction is going to be the most important thing. I think we want to get on a path where that is our focus. And so I would encourage that we send the broadest net and that we advertise for a foreign language position. There was some concern expressed to me that the public got very upset about changes to the French program. And I really think we talked about when there were people upset about cutting time and all that. We were talking about the French program because that's what we had. But I think you could have replaced foreign language program. I really don't think the people that were advocating for more time needed it to be French. They just wanted a quality program. And again, they were looking back at that work we did and saying, this is how much time it should get. They were going to that study and saying, this is what a best program is. And again, that study said the language doesn't matter, the quality of instruction does. So I would just encourage you to consider that when posting your position. Teachers are in a shortage and not without narrowing ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. French.
Great, thank you for those comments. All right, any other public, anyone online?
Got a couple people online, but nobody with a raise.
Okay, no hands raised. All right, we move on to the PTO report. Not sure if we're getting one tonight.
Jamie's joining.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Join?
No, Jamie.
Oh, Jamie joined, okay. Yeah, I don't think our PTO.
PTO's busy out there, or was.
Okay, that's right, they were right up there. Okay, that is fine. Business framework discussion and we'll move on to our reading of our policies. The first one is the second reading of our sustainability policy. And the other one is the annual review of our, I believe this is the investment policy. Guessing there's probably limited discussion on these. We've reviewed the sustainability one a few times now and then other ones, annual adoption.
And assuming Chair, no changes to sustainability policy since we saw the last time?
Not aware.
We separate out the definitions after the first reading identified.
And these will be moving to into our business framework action for approval tonight, so. Okay, that's easy. Are any other discussion of us? All right. Our committee assignments are posted here. We did meet as the four chairs a couple of weeks ago. And you can see, I think this is the link to the Google, this is actually an Excel link. Yeah. This is a hard Excel link, but anyways, it's in the Google Doc. I'm not sure if anyone, I mean, feel free to change your committees if you feel that something's not there. I think we tried to kind of take everyone's committees for what they were in balance and then somewhat. Jim, you had requested a couple of things, I think, for like policy. We figured you seemed like you're busy enough with what we had assigned, that was okay.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. And then Neil, I think you're probably on every committee again. I'm just kidding, we really did try to, we really did try to split up. Obviously, you've got some new board members over in Hanover, including another one as well. So once Ken's, that's position settled up, we'll be reviewing this one more, one more time. And then, by the way, I think the purple, that actually had relevance to, I totally forget what it was now. Oh, that was actually, so it's going to be active during the next year. So we'll try and make, be careful, highlight really which ones were some of the negotiation committees in particular. Hardly, you know, should not have any activity this year. Okay. On that one, we were going to talk about the PTO liaison, just because that is one that is a little bit tricky. It's not really a committee per se. And then it does cause issues sometimes when a board member's at the PTO meeting. And if you have too many board members there, then you have a quorum. We were talking about it for chairs and we were thinking that it might actually be better to, if the PTO president and maybe Sean, if you want to relay this too, if you see the president, if they would like a board member to attend, let us know that month and at our meeting, we can have someone definitely be ready to attend. But I think unless someone really wants to, I think board members are just so busy, frankly, with these evening meetings and the daytime meetings. It was just, it's hard. And I think Lily was graciously good at it and she had the time to go to that meeting. But I was looking around and it was really challenging with all of the other committees, Sean.
I wonder if you would consider just doing a whole written thing?
Yeah.
If they could review it, because I do appreciate having a board member.
Okay.
Maybe if you just did like top five bullet points. Then I think elaborate.
Garrett, I'm willing to do that because they all have way more committees than I do. And I can just like email it to everybody in advance and you can tell me if I missed something or you can just, and I don't mind doing that.
Okay, great, thank you for that. Okay.
But I can't go to the meeting.
Right. And if that, if that's not working, what we all, my other thought was is maybe we could go like once every few, like once every third meeting or something like that is during the school year or show up every other meeting or something. One of us could definitely do that. Okay. But I think Sean, like I said, I'll email the, who's the president, I'm sorry. Like, put you on the spot now too. Leah, that's right. I can send her a note because she sent me a couple of updates and just let her know that. And like I said, and I'm happy to, if she emails me and says, I'd really like some of that, one of these meetings, I'll even, I can delay it a minute as well. Okay. Any other discussion on the committee assignments? Once, twice. All right, on to, I almost stressed the part already, the ed funding update. Neil had sent out that update, we've gotten a couple, well, actually, we haven't really received too much from our representatives, which was making me a little bit nervous, but then this time, Andrew said, you want to?
Nope, I'm going to turn it over to Jay because he's got more current information than I do.
Sure, I can kick it off and we already, we have the existing documentation already attached. Yeah, I feel like our reps have done a nice job of engaging us, lead up to a lot of the fast and furious action that's happening right now. But last Thursday, I attended a VSA meeting, which is the first one I can remember in a long time where we had, I think, almost every superintendent in attendance. And we had a presentation from Zoe Saunders, our Secretary of Education, and then leadership from various committees, including Ways and Means, Finance, and the Ed Committee, both the House and the Senate committees. And I kept, in each other, in each of their discussions, the concept of consolidation was prominent. And they were talking about like how many districts. And so obviously, the governor's proposal, we shrink down to five districts. And then in, in the House Ed Committee, there's, there's a number and then the Senate, they're kind of agnostic about that piece of it. But certainly talked about consolidation, but ultimately, actually, we had the President protest in the Senate too. And he assured us that no, no changes immediately, we can kind of take a deep breath. This is going to take a couple of years to get this fully figured out and implemented. But everybody else was pretty certain and the numbers ranged from, from the low of five to a high of 15. But everybody said it's something like that. So as, as they discussed it, more five seemed to be much more of an unlikely outcome. But, but the number got up to about nine for the bottom and 15 for the top. And so there is a big push to do some real consolidation. As it stands right now, there are exceptions for the two interstate districts, Austin-Rivendell, which is, is really interesting is that nobody seems inclined to talk about that much. But we, we have actually engaged legal counsel through the Dresden School District to monitor the evolution of this legislation and to look at it through the lens of Dresden, keeping in mind the enabling legislation that led to the Interstate School District, which has a provision at the very end that says that neither state shall pass legislation that harms residents of either state. So that's the lens we're looking at it through, but ultimately the implications are, are big, just when you think of consolidation. The discussion about funding is, we're still looking at a foundation formula. Then no one can give us any hard numbers, but it doesn't seem promising. This is probably the best way I could summarize it in terms of the, the foundation itself and then the various modifications that happen along similar lines to those that have already been developed in a weighted student funding approach. There are some adjustments that can be made, but they don't seem to benefit a district like ours. It, it, it seems highly probable that we're going to be facing some serious funding challenges when all of this, when all the dust settles and the legislation is fully filled. I mean, we could spend a lot of time speculating on the likelihood of any of this stuff passing, but it seems that since we have both, well, everybody, our Democrats are progressives and our Republicans in the legislature, it seems like something is going to happen. It's going to be something substantial. Wish I could be clear.
Yeah, I can add a little bit more to that maybe. So I do know, so the bill, the House bill that's under consideration that has this, this transformation into this H454, passed out of House Ed, as you mentioned last week, and is currently sitting, at least as of today, in House Ways and Means, where they're spending some time looking at the funding, this, the funding formula stuff. And I know in the last couple of days, there have been some presentations from the Joint Fiscal Office around what would a potential, what, what could a formula look like that allowed for spending above that base amount in a foundation formula? And so I know that they were entertaining some various scenarios there in addition to what an excess spending penalty would look like with a foundation formula. The thing that I think we need to keep in mind in Norwich is that when you start talking about a foundation formula, you're talking about basically a set amount of dollars that's given to every school in the state, set amount of dollars per kid. When you're a school district that currently spends little, you know, a trivial amount, but a lower amount than some other districts, then that foundation formula is likely to impact you less. When you spend a lot per student, that foundation formula change is likely to impact you more. And we are on the higher end of things. So I'm looking at the latest numbers from last year. Norwich ranks fifth in budgets per long-term weighted ADM kid and third in education spending for long-term weighted ADM. So either metric, we are towards the top. We spend more per student than the vast majority of any other school in the state of Vermont, which means that, you know, whatever, it is highly likely that the switch to a foundation formula will negatively impact our budget in schools.
I found that the provisions in 454 that also address class size, district size, and those, those items have been tossed around. There was, there was a provision that they were looking at, class size of twelve for kindergarten and then moving up to 15, I believe, for up through grade, up through grade four. And then like jumping it up to like 20 or 25 even, depending on who prevails in that discussion. So those will be, those will be changes as well. And there are provisions that you can seek exemption from that if you have a small school by necessity is the term they're using versus a small school by choice. And so there'll be provisions ultimately in the law where you have to make the case that you are small by necessity in order to, to get an exemption from those.
In these conversations, is there any discussion around like alternative funding sources for Vermont, such as changing how we tax second homeowners or creating a marijuana tax or something like that? I'm not stating I'm for or against any of those things, I'm just curious. I know that other states have done things like that. I was just wondering, are they even thinking about revenue in a creative way?
I am not in tune with all of the latest discussions. I do know that last year and years past, there had been discussion about potentially moving to an income-based model for funding education. That didn't really get a whole lot of traction. I haven't so far heard a lot of talk about changing the source of education funding in this session. That doesn't mean that maybe those conversations aren't happening, I'm just not familiar with them. But all of the discussion around moving to a foundation formula, that was all property tax based. I know that for certain, so. And to be clear, right, the, so the education fund receives several different sources of revenue. Property taxes are only one of them, 100% of the sales and use tax, there's portion of rooms and meals, all of the lottery revenue. So there are a lot of different sources of revenue. It's just that, yeah, the one that, it's the property tax one that gets really attention most.
What's interesting is we got a letter from our reps that said that the, there's actually a surplus right now. We're looking to do a one-time adjustment for all of this. So kind of also mind bending when you're like, we have a big problem here, so there's a surplus that they might apply as one time to buy down a tax rate.
Yes, so that was one of the governor's positions coming in. It's sort of loosely tied, I think, to his educational reform plan. And that was buying down the tax rate, this year's tax rate with surplus money. Because basically he didn't, he didn't want much of a property tax rate increase. And so even though, you know, I would argue, school boards and school districts all across the state came in very lean this year, conservative in their spending, which resulted in, I think, only about a 3% on average property tax rate increase forecast. He wanted that even lower. And so unfortunately, my, my, when I say unfortunately, I believe House Ways and Means passed the yield bill that used, I think, close to $120 million to buy down the tax rate for this year and to get it closer to like, I think, a 1% increase. But for anybody that follows this stuff, I think that was a, a bad idea because it potentially sets you up for a very large cliff the next year. And with all of the changes that we're talking about, possibly moving to a foundation formula and the fact that Norwich, I think, would be, you know, on the outer end of being adversely impacted by this, it just could make a bad situation even worse for us based on what they did. That's not final, right? It still needs to go through all of the Senate process and then get through reconciliation. But right now, I, I, I wish they hadn't passed that out of Ways and Means, but that's where we stand right now.
Just so we know, I believe both Jim and Rebecca voted no on this. I did ask them by email. I said, I was kind of taking Neil's position because they're asking for our opinion. And we go back and said that we agree that this buy down, it might save taxes today, but it seems kind of short sighted. And I think as a board member, we had approved budgets and everyone believes that, you know, increases that everyone can project is better. It sounds like I was actually reading the email from Jim back that the day before they voted the yield bill, they discussed putting half of the surplus into reserve fund for future use. My question then was that can you, as a government, can you store this money, right? Because I think there's a tab you have to spend with, right? Like, it was kind of, it was more a government question. So he said, that still would have bought down taxes, but not as much. We would have still had a healthy sum for next year. As Jim said, said that would have been a far more sensible choice. But it didn't get, it sounds like, based on Neil's comment, that basically they decided to just go for it. So I guess we can all be happy this year that we'll buy cars and then we can all save taxes for the tariff set. It does sound like, I think, just one more comment on this. I mean, reading the bill, I sent this to, you know, it sounds like the committee has been now reformed with a capital C, which was the committee that was formed last year. It's going to be looking into all of these details, right?
Yeah, so the, the bill proposes that, so there was a committee that was enacted by law last year to take a look at education reform in Vermont. They spent some time, you know, over the course of that year, trying to come up with some recommendations. Ultimately, were unable to get a set of recommendations really to bring forward. The body still exists in statute. And so what they, what 454 does is use that existing commission, so the Commission on the Future of Public Education in Vermont, and adds to it now a subcommittee whose task is to take a look at this consolid, this district consolidation aspect of things and to come back with a recommendation.
And just district consolidation or everything like foundation funding?
Right now, as I read the bill, my understanding is that it's only focused on the consolidation piece of this.
But taking some of your things, it sounds like where they're looking at really detailed, really detailed analysis.
It required three options regenerated this morning. I did notice there's stuff in there as well, construction spending, which is kind of interesting. That was many, many pages written on that.
Yeah. All right. I think we can probably rumor it along. Yeah, sure.
I just wanted to clarify, Neil, when talking about per pupil spending, you said, I think you said weighted, the weighted. So are per pupil spending, when you say it's on the high end, that is not our actual money spent per student, that's once it's adjusted for what type of students we have? Like, when they're looking at it, I know the state for funding, they are looking at the new weighted students. So that ranking of per pupil is based on two things, how much we actually spend on our students and what kinds of students are walking through the door, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
To be clear, it's based on the ADM, which is the weighted ADM, right? So we're only getting credit for some of our students, we're not getting.
No, right, we get credit for all of our students, it's just some students.
No extra credit.
Some, some students are worth more than others, right? But I mean, some students cost more.
But the per pupil number is based on the weighted, right?
Right, that 820, so last year's number was 828.8 million, right? So that's in the.
So our per pupil spending could go up without us actually spending more per pupil if the type of student walks the door changes.
That is absolutely correct.
I will say, we, I felt a little bad for Zoe Saunders when she came in because the superintendents, once we warmed up and started asking questions, she was very much on the defensive. But at one point, someone asked a pretty poignant question about how can we, because, because all this is predicated on bringing greater equity and improved student outcomes. And so when we, we asked multiple questions about, so how can we promise improved student outcomes and we're cutting and consolidating? The response was, hopefully, there's some miracle solution that pops up. I made sure I copied that quote because, here's where we are.
She was using that.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the challenge, right? You look strictly at the governor's proposal and just to be clear, like, the governor's proposal is no longer the one that's being moved through the, through the House. Yeah, there wasn't, I don't know that there was any sort of evidence-based, you know, projections done on that model to indicate that it actually would have saved money other than just strictly through consolidation and basically carrying back on the workforce. Woo, so.
On that note, thank you, Neil. I was heading on a high note, of course. Any other discussion on this item? We will have regular updates, I think, I mean, I think we'll probably keep it on so much. I mean, so between now and, is there a lot of activity now or are we kind of like?
Oh, yeah, yeah, so there will, so essentially what's going on right now is you've got a bill in the House, you've got a bill in the Senate, right? At some point, they'll flop, right? But if I had to guess, I think what's likely to happen is that the majority of this work is going to end up in a, in a committee of conference at the end of the legislative session. And, you know, unfortunately, this, the way that this structure works, like, that's probably when it's going to get all figured out. And the thing that's unfortunate about that is that at that point, things happen fast. And I won't say that there's no transparency because there's transparency, like, you can watch these things on YouTube, but, but it happens so fast that there's not a whole lot of time that if you're trying to, you know, reach out to a rep or, or get people to, you know, advocate for a certain position, the time is gone by the time you're able to rally people together to, you know, advocate. So I would argue, I think we want to make this a standing item on every meeting going forward. I think the next meeting, we probably ought to have Rebecca and Jim, if not also our senators to join us, just so that when, you know, that 11th hour comes and there's some horse trading going on as to what's in and what's out, at least our reps know our position on this. And, and hopefully that helps to influence how they might, you know, vote on any of the things.
Do you think it, yeah, sorry, I was, I thought the committee that was going to basically be formed for the next year and then make this decision at the end of the year.
So here's the challenge, right? So if you look at the House, like, if the House bill were to pass in exactly the format that it is today, then yes, that is what happens, is that there will be a committee to study potential restructuring of the, of the district and the governance model. But just last week, the governor went very public saying he will veto any bill that does not propose a change in the district, in the governance and district consolidation and a new funding formula this session.
Oh, okay.
So he's, you know, he's, in my view, right, he's taking all the political capital that he's gained over the last several years and he's throwing it all out there this session. And basically saying, if you don't bring me something that shows true education reform, I'm going to veto it. And we're all getting back together to figure this out this session. So there's going to be a lot of back and forth, I think, as we get, you know, into May and towards the end of June as to how all of this plays out. And, and I don't, you know, I don't think anybody's got a crystal ball, I can't tell you what's going to happen. But I think something's going to happen and, and that's when we just be able, we need to pay attention and, and be watched.
And when do we think the modeling takes place? Because that seems to be that, that was the big, in my mind, the shortfall of the three, of the waiting situations. People just failed to model it correctly, then you had a big, huge mess. I mean, at some point, I would assume that someone's going to model the foundation formula, understand the impact every single school district.
Yep, so in one aspect, that work had already originally been done on the governor's plan. So the governor's original plan had a foundation formula that was like 13,200 per student. And then there was some ability to raise a little bit beyond that. And then some of the student weights played into that as well. They issued an initial spreadsheet that showed what the impact would be on school districts. And that's the information I brought forward to this board a while back. Like, we would have been short in several thousand dollars per student, right? So in that formula, things are not looking good. House Ways and Means right now is waiting on a report from Tammy Colby, who was previously one of the authors of the waiting study from, from Act 127 on what a more reasonable foundation formula would look like. And so that I was anticipating hitting any day now for House Ways and Means to review and consider. And so that, at that point, I think we'll start to have some numbers that we could, you know, model and run scenarios here and say, you know, what would the impact change?
Do the foundation formulas, do they ever change based on like economic areas? I mean, you can't pay the same amount for, I mean, I know you have weights for kids, right? Based on a, sorry, whatever it is, 146, but today, a teacher in the city of Burlington or down here in the Upper Valley is different than hiring someone up in, you know, this kingdom, right? Or is that not?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I mean, you're right, there is some cost differential based on just geography, right? And where we're all located and our communities. But I will say, in every sort of foundation formula that I have seen previously, there, that has not been taken into consideration. Doesn't mean that it can't be, but.
But most, most foundation formulas, sorry to keep going on here, allow for, that's the foundation, and for tasks to make their own decision on top of this, and because of our Supreme Court case, Vermont would be a different foundation formula.
Well, you can have the foundation formula, and I think the question at the table, and we talked about before, was, so what provisions might they allow in statute to allow you to spend more than that? And that was the excess spending penalty stuff that I was talking about before. They were running different scenarios in House Ways and Means this week, as to how, you know, what would it look like if we were to allow that? Like, how, how could that be built, how could it be structured, how would it work? And, yeah.
Okay. I'm not sure if it survived, but there was a, a chunk of the governor's proposal, and talked about equity of teacher pay. And they're talking about raising teacher pay where it's low to equal, I guess it won't exactly equalize, but to, but there was a substantial increase, so we asked several questions about that, like, how does that work when the purpose of this whole thing is to reduce costs? And I, I guess they're, they're anticipating greater savings from consolidation that part, partially could be used to pay some teachers more.
You highlight the fact that I'm not convinced that it was, it was a very sweeping reform plan, and I'm not sure that all of the details were fully considered and fleshed out and all of that. So.
Miracles.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, I think that's enough. We can get spot, are there any other questions from anyone else in the room on this?
Man, I agree with you, though, just pay attention.
Okay, I'll, I have a note here to reach out to Rebecca and Jim for our next meeting, with the, I'll see if they can make it. Okay, um, see, parents' survey results, we're going to move to the next thing, are, we have a donation. Children's Book Fund, do we have anyone that would like to speak to this, or would you like me to read it? Sean, would you like to, do you have a call for this?
This is an annual donation that comes our way to support children's books and, you get at our school. I think it's based on some sort of due to population.
Weighted?
It's weighted, unweighted, accurate. But somehow they came up with five hundred fifty seven dollars.
That's great.
All right. Well, every little bit helps, so thank you very much. It's great to know. Um, any questions on that?
One of us.
I'll just reiterate that this is a grant from the Vermont Community Foundation, that was one of the requests they had for public announcement, so.
Oh, great, okay. We're gonna thank, thank the Vermont Community Foundation very much for that, it's, it's, it's very helpful. I'll move on to our next item, which is the substitute nurse pay, I think, Robin, you're discussing this?
Yes. We have been, I've been meeting with the nurses since COVID, and now I meet with them monthly as part of our K through twelve meetings. And over the past few years, we've been talking about nurse pay, the impact that not being able to get nurses in the schools has on the principals and the assistant principals and everyone in the school. And so we talked about increasing our nurse pay from a hundred and seventy-five dollars per day, which is what it is now, to about three hundred dollars per day, which would bring us more in line with the hospitals near us. And so what I put together for you was just some overall information about what nurses are paid in other areas. I gave you some information about what other school districts are paying, up to usually about two hundred and fifty dollars, and I gave you the, the list of those school districts. I also provided the funding for nurses at DHMC. This was from the website, the nurses told me in their experience, some have worked at DHMC, they said it's much higher than that. And we could provide nursing through a private company called Dedicated Nursing Associates, I looked into that. But that is extremely expensive as well, for a registered nurse, we would pay seventy-two dollars per hour. So we are recommending just increasing our nurse pay up to about three hundred dollars per hour. We think that will provide us with more competition in terms of getting nurses. And I'll just give you some recent examples. We had our nurse at the middle school, she brought someone in, they were going to be trained. She asked how much the pay was per day, and when she found out, she said, no, I can't do that, because her income is so much higher doing her per diem pay at the hospital. So you can see, I did include some quotes just from the nurses and from our principals, because our principals and assistant principals seem to take on that task to a large degree when we can't get nurse substitutes. And I know substitutes overall across the district, it's a difficult thing. But they're dealing with some extreme situations, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, and I know that Jamie and Jay can both speak to this as well.
So I guess is the, are we, are we approving this? Is this impacting the budget? Can we approve it? I mean, if we just, I assume we all just say, yeah, this sounds great. Does it, where would this come?
I mean, we don't have an action item.
Okay.
Because this is the first time we've brought it to you, we thought the board would probably want a chance to think about this, we'll discuss this at each of the boards.
Yeah.
And then, and then, but it's, we'd love the board's, like, thoughts on it, given the situation.
How many, you have asked for, like, how many days this might? Because basically, we're, we're talking roughly, what, one hundred and twenty-five dollars extra per day, so like, depending how many days.
Janie is waving her hands, right?
Janie, would you like to, uh?
Yeah, I did a little research, because I figured you might have some questions. And so what I did was, I went for, for Marion Cross, you only have one staffer that this affects. And so I went back out and I looked at historically, just through last year, how many days between professional development and/or sick time and/or personal time, right? People can have, you know, fifteen days of sick, they can have, I think, three personal days, I think, I can't remember, I'm sorry. And I think it's three to five for professional development. So if we raise it from one seventy-five to three hundred, the difference, including tax, between the two would be about a hundred and thirty-five dollars a day. However, so that would be twenty-six hundred twenty-five dollars. However, that assumes that we've been having substitutes, you know, fill the open positions. I don't think that's been the case many times. So if you want to know what the total impact to the budget would be at a three hundred dollar a day with taxes, which would be three hundred and twenty-three, for approximately twenty days, if you were to cover twenty days at that rate, it would be about sixty-three hundred dollars.
I mean, my perspective on this is, um, there's, can we, where do we find money to do something like this? And I also would, I, I'd love to understand how working the about regular subs as well. I was here yesterday or Monday, meeting with Craig. Craig was doing a million things, I happened to bump into a very beloved sixth grade teacher of mine, lives near me. Anyway, she was here for half the day, because nobody else could cover for her, and she had to get, like, drugs later that day to go home. So I feel like we, we need to find a way to do this, I would love for us to find a way to fund it, take care of our staff as much as we can. I also think there's a lot of people not working right now, and we would have more subs if we raised the, the price, I think, of some parents in the school district who don't have work, who would probably be willing to sub if they could get paid more. That's just my.
To address that, Neil, can you ask here, we, to raise the subpay, you just, we just can't raise, I'll put this over in Dresden, or is the subpay? That, that's not historically brought to the board for more action. So we can raise the subpay without doing, I thought there was a problem with, we were talking about raising the subpay, but then we ran into a bit of a roadblock with regards to either agreements or something. The subs can get paid wherever they want.
So when we had this discussion, our concern was that, uh, we were talking about subrates for ed assistants, so we, we didn't want to raise the subrate in a way that made our subs earning higher than our actual employees. And there was some minimum wage considerations too, the Vermont raised minimum wage. That was for.
And just raise the rates of our.
But to be clear, tonight, we're talking about.
Correct, yeah, yeah, exactly, okay.
One consideration for subs versus regular employees is regular employees get benefits and substitutes do not. So like, now that I am a contract worker myself, you, I'm sorry, I'm not speaking to you. You know, I'm sure you know what I'm talking about, but I think it's possible that a sub might get paid more per hour because they have to fund other things.
So Janie, maybe, so Jamie, I, just to address Jason, I would put a pin in that, as the next budget season, maybe we, when we're reviewing the line items for subs and stuff, we can look into more of the subpay, since we just approved the budget for this past year. Yes, Jamie?
Yeah, just keep in mind, you know, from a financial standpoint, when an employee's out, you're paying that employee's wage, plus you're paying the substitute's wage, right? And so we looked at the numbers of sick days, in fact, during negotiations at one point, and they're substantial. So if you're gonna update or raise your substitute, regular substitute pay, it, it's gonna be a substantial number, if you're gonna try to fill every single vacancy. But I mean, with your nursing subpay, you have a, that's a, that's a smaller number, right? Because you're not backfilling multiple people. You're only backfilling a one position, so like, your, your exposure or your maximum cost on backfilling that one position at this rate is, you know, that's finite, right? It's not like twenty-nine FTEs times twenty days available, or a hundred, if they have a hundred sick days banked, or whatever that is. That's a much bigger number than the number that this is that you're discussing.
Right, we are basically talking about one per school for Marion Cross, the middle school and the elementary, Ray, so.
John, from your perspective, it's important to have a nurse here every day of the week if we can, is that?
Again, I would probably defer it, right, because he's our, our change is not here.
Okay.
So if this job doesn't get done.
Yeah.
I also am curious, if we've looked at, I think we looked at a couple of years ago, having a nurse float? If we've compared one of the cost be, taking into consideration the four schools, that we did this, and how different is that from just having, probably it's a great difference, so just having an employee floats between the schools, because also the other thing, that could be helpful for all of the screenings that we have to do, that, that people are gonna help us for.
More than ten times as expensive, but, but certainly worth thinking about in the future.
Yeah, that was actually one of the other pieces that we talked about. If this did not turn out to be something that worked in terms of getting more nurse subs, that we could begin exploring that next.
Two questions, did I hear correctly, Robin, that we, that there is a contracting company that, that offers these services?
Yes, I looked into the contracting company, but we would pay them for a registered nurse seventy-two dollars per hour.
And then based on sort of what your, your experience and what you know, for that three hundred dollar rate, do we think that we are at that, at that level attractive enough to get candidates?
The nurses felt strongly that that would attract candidates for substitutes.
And are there candidates out there?
Yes, we did have one recently, over the past couple of months, who did go and meet with one of our nurses and said she was interested in doing it until she found out how much the pay was. So I know there are some out there potentially.
I'd just be curious if the other school districts that are listed are having any better luck with the increased rate of pay, but something to check into.
There was, um, there, there was a reach out, um, that the, Amy, our HR, human resource, anyhow, she did reach out to many schools and got the rates and everything else. There was a comparison, again, even at the special, I said even a per diem rate versus which, which, so three hundred dollars. I've seen it pretty close to this in another district, but this would be a very, very competitive rate, because most of the schools are not at that rate. It might be, some of the bigger ones might be close to it and stuff like that. But we obviously, our region is really, um, probably, I don't know, it's driving why, or so. It depends on where we're at.
Share something, just, I think it's really important, not so much about the time, it's more if it's a medical emergency.
Yeah.
And or, and we don't have, like, a lot, we have some kids, but not with serious chronic issues right now, but if we did have one in our school next week, coming and moving in or something, that's a big, that's a big, they're on livelihood and, and there's responsibility, and I think that's what. Or if you just had a little bit of head accident come there, when there's something, like, maybe, we do have emergency services, but, like, not, I don't wanna say this, but it is, that's the part, part that I think is most important.
All right. I mean, I think we're, I'm assuming on behalf of the board, but I think maybe if we're not, it probably makes sense to continue, I don't know, it's worth even, like, trying to put this out there, and if you're getting a couple of people to come in for the spring, I don't even know if it's like worth, that would cost. I, again, I, I don't know if that even works with budget, I don't spend money we don't have, but.
It's definitely not budgeted.
It's not budgeted, and I guess the question would be, is to, we put this into next year's budget then, maybe? Or is the idea to see if there's a little extra budget and try this for a few days and see if we can attract people?
I, I think we continue the discussion, but if the total potential cost to this for a, a year of six thousand dollars, it might be money well spent.
Yeah, I don't know that you can just hang the carrot out there and bang one, and try to find out if people are interested, and then say, well, you know, we don't have the money. That'll definitely, oh, it, it would definitely have to be looking to make sure that we're, we're scattered, Robin, my life.
Jamie, good, Jamie?
Hi, um, I realize I'm only the BA for another twenty-something days, but, um, so budgets are very fluid, they're fluid every single year, you build it, you know, nine months ahead of time. So for sixty-eight hundred or sixty-three hundred dollars, you carry a substitute line, it's a substitute line for all of your subs. And in years where we've gone over in the substitute line, we go over in the substitute line, and the surplus coming out of the other lines absorb it. You know, so I feel the budget could absorb, your budget could probably absorb that. You know, if you want to give it a try, I, I don't know that it's gonna attract a lot of bodies because of, again, like Teresa said, where we are, there's so many opportunities to be a nurse sub, either at the hospital, at the nursing homes, at the assisted living facilities, at the other schools. I mean, it's a critical shortage area, but we can try, and then we can adjust the budgets accordingly as you have turnover in staff and/or there are changes in the other lines. And we'll bring you this information at Dresden as well. Um, and that'll be a bigger number, because you have more bodies, but, or maybe it'll be a smaller number, actually, because they have multiple people who can probably usually fill in.
Right, they're able to fill in usually at the high school, so it's not as big an issue there.
Yeah, because of the multiple bodies, they split it, split the FTE out, yeah, absolutely. So anyway, just my two cents, thank you.
Yeah, I don't want to be wasteful, I was, I guess I was just thinking that if, if, you know, even if we were to go forward with half of this, or something, you know, basically, enable them to.
Go forward half of this or something, you know, basically enable them to fill half the sick days or something for three grand. If we've got the extras, I know. What Jamie said, I guess that's where I was going with this is we always, it seems like we always have flexibility with the budget.
Right.
Even now, Jamie's leaving, you're here, we don't have that flexibility. Seems like there's always that little bit of wiggle around, around the edges that are, we're talking a couple, few thousand, you know, five thousand dollars.
We wanted to just kind of test it, we would just, wanted to say, we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it.
Correct, but I mean, at the end of the day, our, we're gonna say that, listen, we're gonna do it, but it's gonna be a max of five or whatever you say, it's like, hey, I would not like do more than that, basically, our surpluses and stuff, but just say.
Jay, you know, I'd say the test, the, the test, if the test fails, we don't spend anything.
Right.
Correct, so. And then next year, we're ready to put this into the budget or not. You guys say, well, we didn't attract anybody at three hundred bucks a day, well, now we know. I don't know. It's just like.
Um, I'm not opposed to it, but strictly from a procedural matter, I think, um, it was only on for discussion tonight, so I wouldn't wanna get, um. Pass it, but I'm not opposed, like, you, you know, if we think the need is somewhat urgent, we can call the board back together again prior to a month from now to. To get something approved or just tack it on to the end of a Dresden meeting. Um, but I would also wanna. Have, have some sort of sense that our colleagues on the other side of the river are inclined to go in this same direction. Um, and that they're not suddenly gonna, you know, we decide on three, they decide on four fifty, um, and now we've got this competition thing going on for folks and. Yeah, that's, I, I wanna see if we could avoid that.
It seemed like Robin's proposal was for, but perhaps.
Yeah.
You remember, we already have a competition, I've been talking with people, we, people get taxed from our taxes here, and they say they've had people outside the bridge and. Um, at trying to recruit new subs at an event, and they said they've had people say, you know, like going through the process and say, oh, Vermont tax, no. Cause if they don't live here, they're not filing Vermont taxes, they don't wanna file it so they can get a sub at low pay. So we're already, even though it looks even, we're not even, and I think there is a difference in the number of subs that come here, so I think we need to keep that in consideration.
We've been tearing on head of subs. Okay. All right, um, so I think, Robin, do you have enough to go? I think, I agree with what, um. Gina, if you agree, I agree with Neil's, I think if this seems like it's something really pressing, let us know, and if not. Yeah, we can tack on something, or if this is just, I think you've kind of got a net up, head nod from all of us that this does make sense and we're going down the right path, then it. It's something that I think if it's. Or we think that if it's necessary, that the numbers should work out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, our business requiring action, I think we can, uh, there's no changes here. I think we can have a motion to approve items B through G by consent. That'd be the expenditures minutes, minutes, yeah, yeah, yes, you have a motion.
Yeah, to approve items B through G by consent.
Second, by. All right, that is unanimous, three of us, we had Gina, Garrett, and Neil here tonight. Okay, principals report.
Skipping the recording chair. I missed yourself, Garrett.
Oh, it's down in the executive session.
Oh, it's down the executive session, you're right. I was gonna skip, I guess I was skipping the.
I think that's gotta be a mistake.
That is a mistake, yeah.
I'm gonna pull that up on the agenda.
It's something very serious to talk about.
But I can do the principal report first, we'll have to pull that.
Sure, why don't you, why don't you do the principal's report?
So I'll go over enrollments. We are up two students this month. Maybe we can get some students come back. But I'm saying, I highlighted my reinforcement professional development that I've done, and I'm gonna reiterate what you went through. And I did wanna say, but it didn't make it in here, is we've been doing interviews for our physicians. We have a committee who has met twice now and interviewed a number of candidates, and we just believe. About all the candidates we will find this year, excited about office jobs that will come to the next one. Any questions about the very part nine course?
I love seeing the professional development stuff, as someone who does professional development, or business people, so that's really great to do that in this.
That was before it was for you, that.
Yes, I have this, I mean, my own thoughts of mass.
Excellent, any other questions for Sean? All right. Um, actually, I'll just do, I, I, why don't we go on to the superintendent's report, Jay?
Sure, I, I really already gave it. I, I had planned on reviewing what we discussed at the, at our last VSA meeting. Um, and we'll just say again, to, I guess, beating dead horse at this point. There's so much happening, as Neil mentioned, so quickly. It's, it's, I think we all need to collectively keep our eyes on it. Um, I'm fortunate to be part of the Southeast Superintendent's Group, and we communicate a lot and we support each other. Um, we interact with our, our respective legislators, and so we're doing the best we can, but I think the more that people understand what's happening here. Uh, I made the point at our meeting. That as, as far as a body wielding any kind of influence on the legislative debates, I mean, if this all goes through, even at the best case on the consolidation side. There'll be fifteen members of the VSA. Um, instead of fifty-two we have now, so our voice will diminish considerably when all this happens. So it's gonna be important for our, our public, people who we serve and. And for our teachers especially, who do have a, a good, strong association to monitor this stuff and. And speak out, testify when you, when you can, and, um. And we're really in a battle for public education here, I feel very, very strongly that that's the case. And it's not just here, it's on, it's on the other side of the river as well. Uh, they're, they're, they're learning from the discussions over on our side of the river. Um, and they're, they're putting proposals forward right now in New Hampshire about going to a countywide system where they consolidate down to the county level. So if you can imagine all of Grafton County. Um, administered by a single central office. Lots of, lots to keep, keep an eye on and really. It's, it's not just the funding, it's everything. That's why this, this transformation word's being used. It's, it's really trying to do a lot of, a really, really. Short period of time, which scares me a little bit.
All right, thanks, Jay, Robin, and do you have, I see there's a, your assistant report?
Yes, I just thought I'd mention a couple of things. We did receive additional funding for our title grants in January. So we made revisions to the grant and that funding was approved this past weekend. And Sean mentioned in his report, and I mentioned in mine as well, the professional development, but. You can see the list of other activities we'll be able to do because of that additional funding, and that. Um, ended up being over forty thousand dollars for MCS.
Excellent, all right. In your last day as guest, so are you actually the principal for the day, or were you just shadowing Sean for the day?
Oh, no, I've been principal for the day once a month. It's been great.
I'm sure she says, Robin, what her special skill is when she's principal for the day.
Yes, I, every morning I like to start, start the day with a little dance party. I'm famous for that now. Sean's trying to figure out how he can do it, but. No, it's been a lot of fun.
That's a high bar, Sean. All right, well, thank you. Any questions for Robin? No, all right. Theresa, do you have, are you doing the business administrator's report tonight?
I just am.
All right.
Good, Theresa.
I have a couple things. Um, one, I have, um, I already, we've uploaded the documents, um, the final report, the auditor's report is uploaded. Um, we also have, and I'll give these to you afterwards, but I have the, um, teachers collective bargaining agreement that needs to be signed. Also have the, um, draft version of support staff, um, that I believe Neil, you're just, you're the person that needs to sign that particular one. And then, um, then we also have first, um. Financial projected for, for, um. What I'll do is I'll highlight you, um. I don't know if I should bring this up on screen, and you guys already have it on screen, the financial report, the debt and surplus.
Good.
Yeah.
Then I can log into this.
It's in the, uh.
Yes.
Yeah. So if anyone, exactly, so it's there, yeah.
So basically, what I'll do is highlight, um, like under the Norwich revenues, um, at this time. We're looking like we're gonna be a little short on the revenues in regards to extraordinary, um, needs, those particular bonds, and that's. Primarily due to, I believe we have a student that left or something, so that. People on that, which, um, will decrease what we may have anticipated. Um, under the expenditures. Under the eleven hundred function, the regular instructional programming. Um, at this time, we're looking at what looks to be a large surplus of a hundred and forty-nine thousand. Um, that's primarily due to vacancies that we have unfilled positions, so, um. We always hope to fill them at any given moment. The next thing I'll just kind of point out is that the special education programming line, kind of going in the opposite direction. Um, and that's due primarily to some medical changes and plans and transition, um, for personnel and stuff. And then. See, the guidance programming, twenty-one twenty is the code. And again, twenty-four thousand eight seventy-one, a little, and that particular savings at this moment is just due to, um. An anticipated medical insurance and, um, we didn't, the person didn't have it. All right, no other word, all but.
Yeah.
Um, we got staff development, back to the line twenty-two thirteen. Uh, right now. That was kind of moving lower, we still anticipate that it probably used up because of a lot of professional development that's happening now here in spring again. We have twenty-four ten, school administration, principal's office. Um, right now, that one's over, but that's primarily based on a, um, HRA claims. So actual claims that are paid out, and so that one has been a little higher than anticipated this year.
Theresa, for the, um, avenue challenge, what is the HRA claim?
Um. What is the, what is the HRA claim?
Yeah, what is that, so HRA?
See, the, the HRA, the, you know, savings to help.
Oh, help.
Yeah, yeah.
Reunivers, yeah.
Or reimbursement, I got, I think, yeah.
Help funding.
Yeah.
And it's usually like the way we're set up, where certain deductions are, the deductions are paid. Many employees have that two thousand dollars or a million dollars or something, so, um, that is banked and then that would pay for the employee necessary pay.
Thank you.
And then custodial services, that one's still running with a little bit of a surplus that, that once again is just due to vacancies. And then down below, the bottom, we have debt service, um, the new, uh. Who did I say it, sorry, the playground, anyhow, that particular loan. When it was written, the loan was written at bank, we usually have about a year before we start paying. But in this particular case, they didn't do that, so we did not budget for the particular, because this particular year. So that just kind of ran us in the red in that sense, because the loan started to be a. Um, and when we ended FY twenty-three, our fund balance at that time was a hundred ninety-eight, twelve dollars that rolled forward. After our FY twenty-three audit was done, it was just a minor adjustment of about seventeen thousand preclassification of the expenditure, so. So they brought up our fund balance at that point to two hundred fifteen thousand, two hundred thirty-three dollars. Then at the bottom of the report, if you're looking, you'll see that the revenue variance was thirty-one thousand, two hundred ninety-seven. Our fund balance variance that I just spoke about, seventeen thousand, two hundred twenty-one dollars. And then our expenditure variance at this given time, and again, our expenditure, our conferences for the expenditures right now. Um, the base on purchase orders already put in place, and so again, some could. Um. In the end, obviously, this number could be decreased or, or increased just a little bit, you know, and then. And then our unassigned fund balance at this one moment, looking at hundred fifty-five thousand, seven hundred nine.
Yeah.
Nobody missed anything. Do you have any questions?
All right, that's helpful. Supreme, good, good position, Ron. Are any questions for Theresa? Yeah, all right, thank you very much, that was great. Okay, um, yeah, I don't really have too much to prepare for a chair report. Um, I think everyone's off and running on their committees now. I know Gina's sitting in the spec committee. Um, Neil's been doing the tuition committee, that kind of got off and running even before the committees were assigned, we did policy. Um, and hopefully it's okay, Jay, I'm just gonna take some more time. We, Jay had mentioned a couple months ago now about your resignation, which we put in in March, so. Um, all of us on the SAU level are starting to put the wheels in motion as far as what the next steps are there, so that's. Unfortunately causing everyone a lot of angst, we. We're all, we thought Jay would be here for the next ten years, but he is not. All kidding, we knew this was coming at some point, so, um, that's been some work as well for. Good going on behind the scenes, um, I think that's. Other than that, like I said, we obviously will be keeping a hold of the north side, and again, I, it is nice to come to these means and read the principal's report. Know that everything at the school at least is going on as it should, and, and a, a good place for all of our kids to be, so. Um, that's, uh, as I drive by in the mornings and see all the kids running around outside and then listening to NPR, it's awfully nice to have those two things going on sometimes. Totally oblivious. Um, all right, anything, let me see here, I think that is all we have for reports, am I correct? Yes, 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 okay. Um, I think at this point. Our meeting is essentially over, we will come back out to approve the nomination list, um, but at this point, we are ready to enter into executive session. So I have a motion to enter into executive session, if language is there.
I'm adj. Moved to enter into, I moved to enter into executive session at eight oh three PM in accordance with Title One, Section three thirteen. For the purpose of discussing, uh.
It'll be personnel.
Personnel.
Correct.
So that's. Pre-mature general public knowledge, particularly disadvantaged public body, you're, you know, with that one.
Yes, sorry, um. Yeah, I think if you say personally.
Personnel.
Or, so discussing personnel? Uh, sure, we're doing the MOU as well, but.
Yeah.
That's just, yeah, it was just, uh, personnel, yes.
Personnel.
It's all personnel. Okay, I do have a second?
Second.
You know, all this is a favor. Okay. All right, thank you everyone for attending. If you are gonna get both.
Okay. All right, return to public session.
And you have your 8:40. Pause.
Get back on Zoom. Okay, everything's good? Okay. I have a motion to approve the nomination list as presented and amended.
Yes, I move to approve the FY '26 nomination list as presented and corrected.
Second.
I didn't.
All right, all is in favor? All right, that is unanimous. Okay, any agenda talks for next meeting? I've got a couple of them, including, like I said, the main ones were back in gym and or gym. And of course, another update on our funding. Still, and any other topics, please get them to me. Do I have a motion to, the next meeting is Wednesday, May 7th, first Monday, what? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Gina has the motion.
Do I need your?
Oh, no.
Should we do a full call?
No. Yes. Motion.
Hans is fine. Yeah. I haven't had to think about Vermont. It'll be too long in a while.
All right, Gina's motion to adjourn, all is in favor. That is unanimous.